Good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to check to see if the mic's working. Are the people online able to hear us? I see Mr. Collins online. Are you able to hear us? Can I get a thumbs up if you can? Oh, great. Thank you very much, sir. I think we're waiting on one of the members of the Select Board to call in, perhaps. This is for Mr. Gino. He's, yeah, Mr. Makriski's in Florida. He's in a conference tonight, so he's not going to be available. So it's going to be about another two minutes or so before we get started. Okay, I think, I think Mr. Gino might have just joined us. Are you able to hear us, Mr. Gino? I think you've muted. I think I, I see you speaking, but we're not able to hear you, so let's see if we can get that fixed.
Let's see now. It's draft six.
Oh, perfect. Okay, yeah, we're able to hear you now. Thank you very much for calling in. So we've got everybody. Let me tell them, folks from SMAC, we're going to start it now. Good evening. I called to order the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, September 17th. It's right around 7:30. We have a quorum of the board present in the Great Hall. We also have one member joining us online. Just to confirm that, we're going to take a quick roll call. This is whether or not you're present. Mr. Gino, are you present? You're on mute again, if you're able to hear us.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. So Mr. Gino is present. Ms. Roberts?
Here.
Vice Chair Carrera?
Here.
I'm here as well. So with a quorum of the board present in this meeting, I'm going to start by reading some additional legal language required because one of our members, at least one of our members, is participating remotely. So accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The information for calling in and showing up online is on the agenda, which you can get at the town website. And we'll also add that the, the meeting will be recorded by SMAC capable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. Recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meet, meeting. If the livestream broadcast or, sorry, the live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So right now, if you're able, please join us in the, the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our meeting does begin with an executive session. I want to mention for the people online and also people who are here in the, in the hall, that citizen comments, board, board comments, and town manager comments were not added to this agenda because the agenda itself has some, some scheduling issues. However, we do intend to offer people the opportunity to make comments, both with the board, town manager, and citizens. So if, if that is perhaps the reason why you showed up, rest assured that we're still going to take comments. It just might not be at the front end of the meeting. It might be a little bit beyond the, either before or after the public hearing. I just couldn't find a good place to schedule that. However, we're still going to do it. So the first item of business is the executive session. The item itself reads, "Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a, 3, and 6, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating or litigating position of the board and the chair so declares." And I do declare that, that we are, will be discussing strategy with respect to potential litigation, and that discussing that in an open session would be detrimental for the negotiating and litigation position of, of the board. So I would welcome a motion to enter into executive session.
So made.
And I will second that.
Okay, the, the motion to enter executive session was made by Vice Chair Carrera and seconded by Ms. Roberts. So all in favor, Mr. Gino?
I had mentioned to you before that, that I don't have any information about what the subject is nor the agenda for this executive session, and I don't think it's a proper thing to do. I am voting no.
Okay, so Mr. Gino votes no to enter executive session. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. We will be returning from the executive session as soon as we're, we're through with the business, and, and at that point, if we have, if time allows early on, we'll take citizen comments and board comments, town manager comments as soon as we possibly can. Thank you. We'll be back. Welcome back to the Select Board meeting, Tuesday, September 17, 2024. Time right now is 8:36. Just before we get started, I want to make sure that we're able to hear Mr. Gino online. Would you mind just confirming that you were able to hear us and that we can hear you?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, so I appreciate it. As I mentioned at the start of the meeting, there, on the agenda, we don't have Select Board comments, town manager comments, or citizens' comments, but that is because of the scheduling of this meeting. I didn't want to mislead people about the timing that we'd be available. We do have some public hearings that we've got to get through, but I will try to get those comments, give everybody an opportunity to speak who wants to speak as soon as we So we are going to start off with item number three. This is a discussion of open meeting law complaint received on September 9, 2024, filed by Lisa Lyons. Votes may be taken, and we have Attorney Brian Winter on the line to, to walk us through this, this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town Council Brian Winter, all the members of the board should have in front of them a draft letter. As you're well aware, our process and the legal requirements for, for managing an open meeting law complaint is that the board within a lot of time period consider and then respond to that complaint. We were tasked with looking into the matter, reviewing the allegations in the complaint, the supporting materials, and preparing a draft response. That's what you have in front of you tonight. Although we've reviewed that on a staff level with your staff, it has not been presented to the board yet. If you have any questions about the, the substance of that response letter, I'm happy to discuss those with you. Otherwise, we feel it's in, it's in final form and ready for your consideration and vote. What we would ask you to do, you know, pending any questions you might have or suggestions or revisions you might have, is to authorize us to, or excuse me, let me back up. First and foremost, to adopt that as the response of the board, and second, authorize us as town council to issue that response to the appropriate parties as the, the letter is addressed. So I won't belabor the matter by going through it paragraph by paragraph, but if you have any specific questions, I'm here and available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Attorney Winter. So I'll open up to the board. I'll start with online. Mr. Gino, do you have any questions or comments?
No. No questions, no comments.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Chairman, no questions, no comments.
Okay, Vice Chair Carrera?
I don't, I don't have any comments on this right now.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm assuming everyone had a chance to read it. It was in our package, and so it's the will of the board. Either we choose some other path, or we adopt the letter provided by town council as the town's position, and then authorize town council to, to send this to the, to the complainant and also to the Attorney General's office. Is there a motion?
So made.
Okay.
And that is to adopt the letter drafted by town council.
Is there a second? Okay, I will second it, and so we'll offer opportunity for a suggest, for discussion, any discussion. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Gino?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrera?
I will abstain.
Okay, and I vote yes. And so a separate vote to authorize town council to, to send this to, send this letter to the complainant and also to the AG's office.
Second?
Second. Okay, Mr. Gino?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera? Mr. Carrera abstained, and I vote yes. Thank you all very much. We are going to move some of these things around. I want to get to these public hearings. They're supposed to be at 8 o'clock, so we're going to, to move directly into the public hearings. Our practice has been for Mr. Carrera as vice chair to, to chair those public hearings. Sorry, was that? Is he, is he present? I don't, he's online? Oh, I apologize. Yeah, so thank you very much, Jillian. So we, we'll cover this one as well. I'd forgotten that, that our town council, who has, is staying up late to help us out with this, is also covering this one. So I apologize, Mr. Winter, but this is to consider discipline up to and including suspension or removal of a board-appointed official, Constable Lucio Silva. Votes may be taken. And again, Mr. Winter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, for the record, Brian Winter, Town Council. So before you, you should have the letter that we received from the District Attorney's Office, putting the town on notice that one of the board's appointees, a constable, was recently arraigned in the District Court for assault and battery with a dangerous weapon, I believe is noted in the letter. And as the board's appointee, it's incumbent upon the board to, at the very least, consider whether or not there's any action necessary and warranted for the board to take in light of the circumstances. We have no other information other than the notice that was received. My understanding, and, and your staff can confirm this, is that this agenda item was provided, and so notice was provided to the subject of the letter for this evening, and so that individual is aware, to the best of my knowledge, that the board is considering this matter and may be in fact in attendance tonight. This is not a public hearing. This is an agenda item to consider whether or not the board should take further action. As noted in the agenda item, there's a range, of course, of actions that the board might consider. One is, of course, nothing, do nothing. The second is a suspension, and so under the circumstances, because this individual is, is holding a certain amount of authority under color of the town of Stoughton government as a constable, and as this board's appointee, you may wish to consider immediately suspending that appointment and all the rights and privileges that are associated with it, so that while this matter is pending and pending potentially an investigation by the town and this board, the person cannot use their, their official position as a constable of Stoughton while that matter is being investigated. And of course, the, the last sort of piece of that, that process would be to consider more permanent discipline, which would be to revoke and rescind said appointment. However, there's been no investigation at this time, and there's been no notice of public hearing, obviously, a board appointment that is appointed for a term of years. I would suggest that the board has certain rights associated with that, and certainly notice of the, the subject of potential discipline, the potential for revocation or rescindment of that appointment. They'd be entitled to notice of that, an opportunity to be heard in front of the board and be represented by council if they so wish. And so we're at the very beginning of that process. And so really, the two options before the board night, tonight, if it wishes to consider them, would be the, the not to take any action or take the matter under advisement, or to immediately suspend the appointment and all rights and privileges associated with it pending either further correspondence from the District Attorney or an investigation by this board through our office. So happy to answer any questions on sort of the circumstances or the board's options if anyone has any questions.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Winter. I'll start with Vice Chair Carrera. Do you have any questions or comments?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Town Council. Attorney Winter, in order to protect the town, I think no action would, would be a little amiss. I think we should focus on not rescinding, but suspension of him using any of his legalities under what we appointed him for until we hear the outcome of, of what's going on. We do that with policemen, we do it with firemen, we do it with other individuals. So in order to protect the town, I think we should definitely take this action, but not to rescind the appointment until we hear from the, the.
District.
District Attorney.
Yeah.
What is your feelings towards that?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, the microphone cut out a little bit, but I believe I, I take your point. And so I concur generally. I think it's premature to talk about, you know, any discipline of permanency, revocation, rescindment, et cetera. There hasn't been an investigation. All we know is what we know from the District Attorney's Office was that this individual was arraigned and the nature of the charge. I've reviewed the docket of that criminal action in the District Court. There's no real information of substance available to me, but, Mr. Carrera, as you, you know, noted, you know, in a situation that people may be more accustomed to, an employee of the town or even an employee of this board, under such circumstances, often the most protective measure we take is to suspend that person immediately. We don't pay this individual. They're, they're a constable appointed by this board, so pay isn't an issue, but to suspend them immediately pending the outcome of the, the criminal matter pending in the District Court, or if it moves to Superior Court, or an investigation by this board, I think is entirely appropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you.
Mr. Gino, do you have any questions or comments?
I would just make a motion that we do suspend Yuliko Silva from, from practicing as in that position and until we get further information.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you to our Town Council. When I thought about this case and, and seeing that he's scheduled for, his court date is next Thursday, September 26, I tried to decide what position is closely related to count the role of constable or the position of constable, such as who else carries a weapon? And I thought about law enforcement. So my question to you, if a police officer was in the same situation, what has been the course of action most select boards or towns would take? I'm just using, I'm trying to set precedent here and use that as my, as my judgment call.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, to Select Person Roberts, our standard operating procedure under similar situations for a paid employee of the town would very likely be to put them on paid leave pending an investigation. Now, that obviously could be of escalating severity depending on the nature of that individual's roles and responsibilities of the town. A constable is, is not an officer, but acts under color of law to do a great many things using the title of constable. And so I think that's, that's something of an, of an analogy for you to draw from. So that is in keeping with the measures that we would take in similar cases, or frankly, in any case where you may have a board member or an employee essentially of this board that has been arraigned and charged with a crime of violence. Also, I just wanted to mention, just so the board is aware of this, you know, dates that appear on a court's calendar, in this case, I think it's the 26th, there's another event scheduled in the court for discovery, compliance, and jury election. So there's a number of procedural steps that occur as cases unfold, and so some of these dates can move around. Some of them are procedural dates, and they don't actually get to the substance of the underlying charges, and so maybe things happen between now and, and the 26th, but maybe they don't. And so I didn't want you to think that there was any reason to believe that there would somehow be a disposition on the 26th. There might be, but there might also not be. And so the case could proceed on for weeks or months into the future. That's, that's certainly out of our control. That's for the court and the District Attorney and defendant, defendants' counsel to, to manage those kinds of case procedural issues. And so this is something that we would monitor and correspond with the prosecutor and the District Attorney's Office, and so we would have more information as information became available to us. But this docket, it's, it's not written in stone. Things can be somewhat flexible.
Thank you very much. My second question is, for the, the level of complexity, would he have been arrested and locked up if it had been at a certain level of complexity, other than what I'm reading on this piece of paper on your, on the, from the Commonwealth of Middle Sec District Attorney's Office?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Roberts, it's hard for me to comment on that. I'm not a criminal attorney. I'm a municipal attorney, and so I don't deal with a lot of criminal matters through the District Attorney's Office or the District and Superior Courts in terms of procedure and arrest procedure. So I can tell you that there are certain situations, of course, that would warrant arrest, and people would be held in custody until they're arraigned, and then the court would determine the disposition after that, if they're out on bail, personal recognizance, et cetera. Other things are what we call, you know, cases where there's a summons issued. They are not arrested, but they're summoned to court after a process that, that leads to that summons. And so it's the, the police officers involved and the District Attorney and the assistant to District Attorney assigned to the case that would make those decisions, certainly not us, and we wouldn't play any role in that. So all I know, we haven't spoken with the District Attorney's Office, all I know is what's apparent on the docket. But the, the possibility of arrest, I suppose, exists in, in any case, but it's up to the discretion of police officials and not us.
Thank you very much. I don't believe I have enough information, and I'm going on, you know, the court date is next week. I know that's subject to change, but I'm not in favor of suspending him prior to his court hearing. I'm not prejudging that.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Winter, and so the, the only document that we have, and I believe the, you looked a little bit into some of the court filings, but I don't, I believe, I'll ask, but I believe you had, you don't, you have not seen any more substantial information than what's available to us right now. All we know is that, that the gentleman who was, who functions as a constable for the town, Mr. Silva, he was arraigned in the Framingham District Court on a criminal complaint charging him with assault and battery with a dangerous weapon and also assault and battery. The District Attorney does add that, the caveat that these are charges, these charges are allegations only, the defendant is presumed innocent unless and until proven guilty beyond a reasonable doubt in court. Do we know anything more about the details of the case?
Mr. Chairman, you recited that, I think, accurately. I actually have the court docket up on another screen in front of me. There aren't any links to any of the substantive documents. He was arraigned on 6/25. There was a pretrial hearing on 8/12. The next event is down for 9/26 for discovery, compliance, and jury election. And again, there'll be, I imagine, some interaction in court around that, but I don't have any documents available to me other than just the face of the docket. And so there's, there's nothing else that's been provided to us or disclosed to us. And again, you know, it's a criminal matter, and as you just recited, there's a process associated with that. And so even if we had those things, those would be, I would expect to see, for example, the complaint itself, maybe an affidavit that was filed in support of it, and, and other related materials, but, you know, the, the standard is, you know, guilt beyond a reasonable doubt, or, you know, the, the defendant may plead in some way and reach some sort of disposition through negotiation, and we don't have any information pertaining to any of those things. So all we really know for certain is what's contained in the District Attorney's letter to us and what's evident on the face of the document, which states that he was arraigned for the two charges you just mentioned, and that that event was held, and then he was released on personal recognizance.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera, I've got a couple more questions, but I'll, I'll pass it on to you if you. Okay. So the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the document again. When I see, you know, assault and battery with a dangerous, dangerous weapon, you know, I can't help but my imagination goes to some of the worst possible weapons that it might be, and I think that's probably pretty normal, but when I look up the master law definition of dangerous weapon, you know, it seems a little bit broader than that. It certainly can, can include items that are inherently dangerous like knives and guns, but it could also include items that can be used in a dangerous way. Bricks, sticks, you know, I, I think it's, without any facts of the case, it seems like, like we don't know enough really to make any, even, even just with the accusation itself, a judgment of the severity of it. But I just wanted to see, Mr. Winter, since you're an attorney, and you, I know you don't work in, in criminal defense, but you probably see these things more often than we do. Is that assessment right, or is, what should we, how should we understand dangerous weapon?
No, and I think your, your question is well taken, because the statutory charge is just that. It's, it's defined as it's written on the page here, but we don't know the facts underlying it. So, I mean, the potential exists, and I wouldn't know one way or the other, that it was, you know, the kind of dangerous weapon you and I might think of off the top of our head, you know, a knife or a gun or something, but it could also be a shoe. You know, it could be any number of things, and we wouldn't know because we don't know what the theory of the case is or what the underlying facts is that have been alleged here. We're not privy to that. And so that would be the purposes of an investigation, is to learn what those things are and see what the disposition of the case is, and what, not only allegations were made, but what allegations were either proven or allegations that were admitted. And so that's the whole purpose of an investigation, because we don't know those things. And so it could mean a great many things, and so this is one of the reasons why we don't sort of jump to conclusions and reach an ultimate decision that we can't undo. an ultimate decision that we can't undo, you know, here with the board this evening and why you consider things that are, that are lesser, like an immediate suspension, so that you have an opportunity to investigate those things and to learn those things before you make an ultimate decision. You can undo a suspension. A suspension can be temporary in nature. You can revise and reconsider that decision if presented with reasons to do so. And so you reserve all those rights and the, the subject of this would have the ability to, of course, make their case to you as well. And so we would learn things not only from our own investigation, but perhaps through this individual's correspondence or communications to us or through their counsel. And so I wouldn't want to take a step that prejudices their ability to represent their interests or for us to investigate into the pending matter in the district court.
And I just have one, one last question, which is, my understanding of a constable is essentially a police officer, or sorry, I should say a peace officer, with sort of limited policing powers. And it usually just, you know, involves, you know, overseeing things like evictions or dropping off legal documents or whatnot. But since I'm a layman and I'm just kind of going off of what I know from TV, could you help us better understand what exactly a constable is and their, and their function as, as an appointment from the town?
Sure. Constables have to be appointed in the community in which they work. We, as lawyers in my office, work with constables on a pretty regular basis and it often involves service of process and interaction with the public under the color of, of some sort of, you know, quasi-police authority. And so they, they participate in eviction proceedings in terms of serving process and eviction papers, civil processes as well. They can be appointed a quote unquote "special process server." And when we file lawsuits and need to serve summonses and things like that, we often work with them in order to effectuate that. It's not uncommon. I know some constables that do carry a firearm, although I imagine some don't. But they do interact with the public and they do, to a certain, you know, capacity, act under the color of, of law the way an officer might. And so the perception of these individuals, when they do go to serve process, is they, they present themselves as a constable and they file an affidavit with me, which I eventually file with the court, you know, certifying that an appointed constable duly recognized by the town of Stoughton has undertaken such and such an activity and they've certified, you know, what they've done to the court under the pains and penalties of perjury. And so that is a certain standard that the, the public would be aware of when they're interacting with constables. So I don't want to say that they are police officers or suggest that they are, but they, they do act with a certain color of authority in doing what they do as a constable and in their, their role as kind of a, an adjunct officer of the court, serving process and things like that. And so that is where they perform this function in this service by the people that they're hired for and it's going and knocking on doors. And it's, and it's visiting and serving papers on people in your community. So it's very forward-facing and it's, it's very boots-on-the-ground level work. And these people that are, the subjects of that work, of course, are interacting with these people too, as they're serving legal process and legal paperwork and other various matters. And so it does have a, certainly a color of authority associated with that because they're doing it on behalf of the government, they're doing it on behalf of courts, and they're doing it on behalf of attorneys practicing in the area.
Do they carry badges?
I believe they often do. They're not police badges. I don't know and I don't want to misstate to the board. They identify themselves as constables and I believe they do that through identification. I don't know if they carry a badge indicating such or some other identification indicating such. I just don't know that.
Thank you very, very much. And Mr., sorry, Vice Chair Carrera, you have some follow-ups.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Winner. In order to be arraigned, you have to be arrested. Am I correct?
No, you could be summoned into court for an arraignment date. So being arrested is, you know, you're being stopped and seized, essentially taken into custody by an arresting officer. And so that happens in real time. You may also be summoned. And so there's a different process where, you know, any individual can file an application for a criminal complaint in court and that might be a police official, but it could also be a private citizen or anyone else. And if the clerk magistrate, after a show cause hearing, determines that there's probable cause, then a criminal complaint can issue. And that criminal complaint will summons you to appear in court and answer to the charges and that would be your arraignment.
I, I just want to make a comment that a constable for us is a privilege. We don't have to give out these badges to these people, but I will say again, to protect this town, it isn't, it isn't a problem to suspend the person. And they always have a right, if they clear whatever's going on, they can come in and ask, ask us to reappoint or release them back. I just don't want to be on the other end of it. God forbid that if this went bad in another way, that by not suspending, we didn't prevent. And I have to look at it this way. I'm not going to try to think what's a dangerous weapon and what isn't. I'm going by what the district attorney has given to us and with the way that things are in this world right now. I don't want to roll the dice. We appointed somebody to do, do a job. We didn't appoint them, you know, to misuse or whatever. I don't want to pass judgment, but I'm not asking the board to take it away. I'm just saying, let's put it on a shelf till we find out what the outcome is because this could, there's a date here, this could go on. Attorneys could go, I can't be there. This hasn't come together. This could go on six months.
Mr. Carrera, if you might, there was an email that General Carrera sent out that included language for a potential motion for suspension. It says, "I move to immediately suspend..."
I didn't get the email.
It's okay. "I move to immediately suspend Ulacio Silva as a constable appointed by this board to suspend all rights and privileges associated with that office." And since it seems like you're...
I'll, I'll, I'll use that motion.
Okay. So that is the motion. Motion is to immediately suspend Ulacio Silva as a constable appointed by this board and to suspend all rights and privileges associated with that office. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gito. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gito.
This person deals with confrontational situations oftentimes when he's delivering papers. People don't like to get some of those papers. I agree with, with Mr. Carrera's position on this, which is why I made the motion about five or 10 minutes ago to move ahead with this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, were you, can I make a statement as well?
Yes. Once again, I did say earlier, I don't believe we, I have, speaking for myself, enough information to be in favor with suspending him. I have not even heard from him and that's not the agenda item for tonight. He's, I'm sure he's in the audience somewhere, but that's not our agenda to hear the situation and the circumstance. And I believe that the hearing would, would indicate if we should be concerned when I think of, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. I will actually just make a statement myself. I, I think that there's, I asked a lot of questions, but they may have pointed to a preconceived ending. It really didn't. I just, but I wanted to make sure that whenever the board decided, that there was some, some, you know, strong evidence for that, one way or the other. Personally, I agree that, that he is presumed innocent. We don't know very much detail of what actually transpired. And for that reason, I normally would, would want to kind of wait, wait it out and give it to somebody an opportunity. But this position is, is unique in that some people, I'll just even say myself, if someone says they're a constable, I don't always appreciate that's not the same thing as a police officer, you know? And so, and so I think that, that, that this, that it puts him in a very unique role in the, that serves the public. And for that reason, given the, the nature of the role itself, you know, I would be more cautious and sort of err on the side of caution here. And I agree with, with, with suspension. And if, if we get more details and it turns out he just, all he was holding was a ham sandwich, then we can always change our minds and, and reestablish him in this role. But, but I'd rather err on the side of caution and say, you know, it's probably better that the town not be misrepresented through him as a constable. That's my view. But any other comments? Nope.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Once we find out the result of that hearing, the court hearing, I would like to have it on the agenda so we, we can take further action, whether with pay, well, I know we don't pay him, but what other action we would like to take.
I think that's very fair.
Okay.
Okay. On the, on the motion, Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts.
No.
Ms., sorry, Vice Chair Carrera.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So the vote is three to one in favor. So I, I very much appreciate the, the involvement of the board in that, in that discussion though. I think that was really healthy. And Mr. Winter, if you're still there, yeah, it looks like you are. It looks like, I think you might be free for the rest of the night, so I just wanted to thank you again for your time and for your, your guidance.
My pleasure as always and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And Mr. Coulter, of course.
Be well. Have a good night.
Bye-bye, Brian.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. So we are running way behind. Apologies, but we have public hearings now. We, I think we have three public hearings and it's our practice that our vice chair, who's been running public hearings for a very long time, take control of them. He does an excellent job. And so I want to make sure that the applicants and the, and the town are well, well taken care of in this respect. So I'm going to turn over the, the gavel to Vice Chair Carrera. Whoever speaks to him, treat him like the chair. He's, he's running this meeting and run everything through him. So thank you very much. You've got the gavel, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Cavy. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on September 17th, 2024 at 8:00 p.m. to consider the application for Catajay LLC for a Class II license located at 909 Washington Street, Unit Number 203, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. And via Google Meets, it may be broadcast via Stoughton Meteor Access Television and live stream. Google Meets video link in telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212. Or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov by 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Is there a motion to open the hearing, sir?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Sir, how are you today? I'm just going to read a couple of things here that, boy, this sucks. This, this is for, for you to sell cars...
Yes, sir.
By, by auction, to auction. And I just have to read some information that came from the departments. Hang on one second, all right?
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, we have information from the Fire Department. They have an approval with a restriction below. It says online vehicle sales, no vehicles will be stored at 909 Washington Street. Police Department has been approved with the same letter saying that no vehicles will Board of Health has approved it with no restrictions. We have building and zoning. Yes, this is an online business, no cars to be on site. That's Jack Erickson. And the Treasurer's Office, there's no objections from the office through Teresa Cardoza. And we have an apartment approval from the Water and Sew Department and that's from Anna. So we have the application, the owner's name, and it's on file. He has his licenses and all that for insurance, all in order. So, sir, go ahead and speak. Speak into the, right here, make sure it's on the green.
Yes, um, yes, sir.
You can let go. There you go.
Oh.
So it's all yours now.
All right. Good evening. How you doing? All right. Um, the business is, is online business. So I moved, this is between auction to auction, so I don't park any cars in the facility at all. So is, in order to get the old sales, so I need the required, acquired dealer's, dealer's license. That's all. That's what I mean.
Is there any questions from the board, Ms. Roberts?
I have no, tell me a little bit more about your experience in this business.
Speak up good into that because it's tough. Go ahead.
All right. All of my vehicles, I sell it to the dealers, only dealers. So it's an auction. I do it in auction. I'll be based in auction. So I'm online. So I have a trailer that moves vehicles from one auction to another auction. That's, I don't sell to individuals, all sales. Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gito, do you have any questions, sir?
The only question I have is, he doesn't store vehicles at all. He just moves them, he buys them and sells them to another auction. Is that, sells them at another auction. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cavy?
Yeah, so let me ask the same question again. I apologize, but I just really want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. At no, at no point do you store cars ever? Or do you sometimes store them, but some, it's someplace else?
No, no, no. They stay in auction. So in other way to, before I can do a transaction in auction, I have to have a license.
Okay. So you buy the cars, I mean, you've got to take possession of those cars. Where, where do they go?
They go to the auction.
Okay.
Direct.
I appreciate it. Thanks for walking me through that.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to have something to say or anybody online? Seeing nobody, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any, anything else that has to be added? No. Ms. Roberts? On the vote.
On the vote, yes, to close the, the hearing.
Okay. Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes. What's the wish of the board?
So I will...
So I will grant the license with the caveat that all vehicles be held at the location of the lease.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're all set.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on September 17, 2024 at 8:00 p.m. to consider the application of J.C.'s Gold and Silver Depot for a secondhand jewelry license located at 745 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. 020702. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, Third Floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. And via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television in live stream. Google Meets video link in telephone connection for the public comment available by calling Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov by 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion to open.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor? Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Hang on a second here. Krista Milton Cave, are you online?
Yes, sir, I am.
I can barely hear her.
We're able to hear you just a little bit. We're going to see if we can adjust the volume on our side so we're able to hear you better. Just give us one moment.
How's that?
Excellent.
Well, yeah, way better. Thank you very much for your patience.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Krista, I'm just going to read some correspondence from our board, and then I'll turn it over to you, and you'll be able to talk to the members here and tell them what you're going to do, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. From the Fire Department, Assistant Chief May Comba, he has approved it. From the Police Chief, Chief Donna McNamara, there's an approval with a side letter. And the side letter states that she has no, she has no objections with the application with the following caveats, that the board established with the applicant in the license is not a pawn license, so loans cannot be provided to customers, and that the applicant prior to the Select Board hearing for approval have a system in place for reporting to the Stoughton Police Department all business transactions. Such system should be reporting on a daily basis. Chief McNamara said, I have attached the town of Stoughton bylaw, Chapter 146, secondhand jewelry requirements for the Select Board in the applicant. And that's in here. Krista, do you have a copy of that too, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. So Board of Health has approved it with no problem. Building and zoning, Jack Erickson has approved it. There's no comments. And there's no objection from the Treasurer's Office. And water and sewer is okay. And that's all that we have for correspondence, other than the application that's in order. Okay, Krista, it's up to you. Go ahead and tell us about the business.
All right. Good evening again, everyone, and thank you for hearing me this evening. So my business is, will be my first time opening a business, and it will be a business where we would buy gold, silver, platinum, diamonds, jewelry. To my understanding, Chapter 146, reading Section 4 or Section 5 were the issue with reporting to police. I do understand that concept of reporting to them on a daily basis. I would like to, I would like to ask, according to the bylaws that I'm reading, it says weekly basis. I want to make sure that I am following the right protocol. So we will take, we will take in our customers and whatever they have to bring, we'll make sure the items, of course, are authentic. We will explain to them the process of how we establish authenticity to their jewelry that they bring in to us. We are understanding that we do need an identification from everyone that comes into the building. No one under 18 will be allowed to do any purchasing, I mean, selling their jewelry at all. So we have signed receipts. We make copies of the receipts. We document all jewelry that we are taking in from each individual. We date and we will bag the receipt, with the receipt numbers altogether. The items will be held for 15 days, as stated in Section 4 of 146. We'll make a copy of the license. We'll take pictures of the jewelry and the receipt numbers, and that will be submitted to the police department. Myself can scan them or email them, however they would like for us to provide them with that information, or we can deliver to them in hand. They're literally right around the corner from the establishment. We will have the, you know, cameras inside and outside of the building as well, just for security purposes. And that's pretty much it. As far as the pawn shop, we're not a pawn shop. When we initially put out an application, I wasn't aware that it was two applications. So I will be reiterating that in the near future. I will be applying for that as well. But tonight, I am understanding of Chapter 146, the secondhand jewelry thing that I am supposed to follow from the town. For me, I am, I have been in law enforcement for the last 26 years. I am currently a sergeant with the Boston Police Department. I am aware of following procedures and orders with no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, any questions, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Milton Cove.
It's Cave, ma'am.
Cave, thank you very much.
Yes.
My question, just to reiterate, this is a retail establishment, basically a cash and carry. So some, your customer brings in their jewelry, or they are purchasing jewelry. Is it anything more elaborate than that? Or this is my simple, simplified version of your business. Please explain.
That is a good simplification of the business, but we will only be purchasing their jewelry. We will not sell them jewelry.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Gito, any questions?
Yes. The Chief of Police asked that all business transactions be reported daily. I think that you indicated something on a weekly basis instead. Is that?
No, sir. I was only reading verbatim from the town law that's printed, and I would definitely would, clarification. But if the chief is saying...
You're cutting out. I didn't hear the last part.
Mr. Gito, I think her video froze, but she's back with us.
I'm sorry. I was just looking for clarification. 146.5 states weekly basis, but if the chief McNamara is looking for a daily base, he or she will get daily basis. I believe you said she. I'm not, I'm sorry if I...
You're correct. You're correct. She.
Yeah, I think it's important to do that. Your business brings in, brings in items, and you may or may not know who, where those items came from. You see somebody in front of you, but you don't know where that came from. So I think it's important that that happened. I, this is not necessarily something for you, but I think the board needs to take a peek at what the fines might be for violation. It shows only $50, and it's a minimum of $50. But I, I think this is a good way to get rid of materials that somebody may get that don't actually belong to anyone except somebody who no longer has them in their drawer. And I think we need to take a peek at that, the fine issue, and what we do with violations of a business like this. Those are my only comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. Cavey?
So a few things. First of all, I actually would just like to, as with anybody who opens a business in Stoughton, thank you for picking Stoughton as a place you want to do business. I checked the bylaws. You are correct. The bylaws state that it has to be forwarded to the police department on a weekly basis. And notwithstanding Mr. Gito's request, and also the Chief of Police, we can ask you to do something that is beyond what's in our bylaws. So that would be something that you just do as perhaps, you know...
I understand, Mr. Cavey, and we will abide by that.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't hold you to that. So so long as you're following the bylaws, that's all that really matters. I did, and this is just aside.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind my interruption.
I do, sir. As soon as I'm done, you're able to, you're able to have the floor.
Mr. Gito, hang on. I'll come back to you. Let Mr. Cavey finish, please.
My brother-in-law is in a similar business. So I, he's been in it for a while, and I probably haven't asked enough questions. But I do recall that some of the, you know, involvement of making sure his pictures and these things are recorded, and you providing information to the police on a regular basis. I also checked that master law. I know it looks like you're probably very attuned to these things. So I will mention that Chapter 266, Section 142A goes into detail about this as well. The state law actually only only requires that you, that you have your books available for the police to examine. And so that also is, you know, expectation, there's sort of laws that require it. But as far as, I just wanted to clarify that, what the actual laws are. We can clarify with the Chief if she was either wanted, intentionally wanted a restriction that was, that was required more than our bylaws in the state law, or if she was really just meant to reference the bylaw. And so just to make sure that you're, you sort of know the expectations and you're, and we're all on the same page. But as far as the business goes, I do appreciate you picking Stoughton. And I wish you, if, you know, if all goes well here, I wish you nothing but the best of luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gito, you have, you have something that you would like to say?
I think if we have an agreement between the applicant and the town, that a certain thing will be abided by. And that is the important thing. And I was pleased that the applicant was willing to abide by the, by the Chief's request. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
And I think that should be the basis under which a review of all the activities are reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to back up what Mr. Cavey said, we had a little sidebar for two seconds, and I, I said to him that we don't have the power to change a bylaw that it was already voted in. Did it have to be a process to change it? So I do commend Krista for stepping up and saying, and I respect the fact that who you are too, it's, it's very good. So I'll open it up to the residents. If anybody has something they would like to say? Anybody online? Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Krista?
Yes, sir. I would just like to ask, Mr. Cavey, he mentioned a chapter. I want to make sure I familiarize myself with it. I believe he said 266.142?
Give me one second. I might have actually closed that tab on my computer.
I'm sorry, sir. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Don't be sorry at all. Just give me one second. I can quickly get it back to you. Gold. So it's, here it is. What I was looking at is Chapter 266, Section 142 Alpha. That is, there might be other sections that are useful too, but that specifically is gold, silver, and platinum dealers' records and penalty. So that was just very specific to the question that was being asked. There may be other, other things worth looking into. But, but it seems less restrictive than, than our own bylaws. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing that we have no more input from the public, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Roberts. Mr. Gito, how do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. What's the wish of the board?
I move that we approve the license.
Second.
With the conditions that the Police Chief recommended.
Personally, I want to stick with the bylaws. If it's snowing out and she's not able to get the reports to the police, I don't want that to be a penalty. I think that a daily reporting is onerous and outside the scope of what we can do. I won't be adding that to my, to my motion.
And I concur with Mr. Chairman.
How you, how you say, Mr. Gito, on the motion?
As written, I wanted to, I would like to amend that motion to include...
We can't, we don't have that power.
Okay.
That has to be a whole new hearing opened up to change that one thing by this board.
Is the public allowed to speak?
What's that? Is Chet, do you have, do you want to speak, Chet?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
I'm not used to the computer. I'm paper person.
We're on, we're on the approval motion, Chet. We can't take any more.
Okay, that's why. I tried to get on sooner, but I couldn't.
Mr. Gito, do you understand what I said?
I do understand what you said.
So how do you vote on Mr.?
I think I'll abstain.
Oh, you're going to abstain? Okay, sir.
Yeah, I am.
All right. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Krista, you're all set. You can do your business. And thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the town.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
You, too.
And it's all yours, Mr. Cavey.
We've got one more. Got a change of manager for Nacera's. I can get off that easy. Do we have Mr. Nacera? Okay. Yeah, iteration for a long time. I feel like we can move forward. I mean...
I'll move if you want.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with it.
I don't even have a hearing sheet in here. Yeah, I didn't think it did. Yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing, but it did not have to be advertised. This is for a change of manager. Nacera's Restaurant Incorporated, Chateau Restaurant of Stoughton at 1165 Park Street. It looks like the applicant was on the line, but he's no longer on the line. I will just briefly go through the department recommendations. If you'd like to open the public hearing first, I'll do that after.
It's, I don't even know if we have to open any minutes. It's not that we have public hearings. It's just a hearing.
Just a hearing. So the recommendations of the departments, the fire approves the request, the police reviewed the application and completed background checks of the proposed manager, Derek Nacera, and no concerning or disqualifying information was located, no objections. Board of Health approves, building zoning approved, treasurer's office approved, no taxes current, all taxes current, apologies, and then water department approve. So this is recommended by the, positively by our town departments.
And Mr. Chairman, Derek is a certified alcohol server, so he has his training so he can be a manager. And they have their insurance form in here, their liability, so they have all that. I mean, it's just a formality, usually. Plus, he's one of the family.
So, you know, I'm less familiar with this area. We've done a couple of these along the way. I don't recall if we open public hearings. If we want to vote on this without necessarily having a public hearing, and if it turns out that was incorrect, then we will simply have it on the next meeting to address any concerns if we didn't follow the rules. But I think we can move forward, and if we have a, if we step in it, we'll just... They might be better. Yeah, just, you know, better to overdo it than underdo it.
I'll make a motion that we open the hearing.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion to open the public hearing, a public hearing, was made by Vice Chair Carrera and seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. As I mentioned, this, we don't have an applicant present, so I'm not sure if we'll be able to ask questions. But do people have questions or concerns?
No, this is just normal that they change managers. A lot of times, they go from, they have, I think they have like 11 spots, so they must move around. If somebody is stepping out, they'll step up, and then they might be come back, or that family member might be there for a while. So I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, I'm generally in agreement. One family member is taking the place of the manager for a family business. Ms. Roberts, do you have any concerns, questions?
Mr. Chairman, no, I have no questions and no concerns.
Okay. Mr. Gito?
This business has been here for a long time, and I agree with all the other comments made.
Excellent. Though we don't have an applicant present, do any members from the public have any questions or comments?
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay. Motion to close by Vice Chair Carrera and seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Sir, Vice Chair Carrera? Yes, I vote yes as well. And so now, how would the board like to vote on this?
Motion to grant the change of manager, naming Derek Nacera at the address stated.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Mr. Gito. Mr. Gito, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So we can cross that one more thing off the list. Because we have some applicants for a committee, we're going to move on to that, and after that, we'll take public comments, select board comments, town manager comments if there are any. Excellent. So the next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. There are two applicants, and my understanding is that there's one available seat. So I know we have, so we have Jaclyn Daniels and Fay Howard. See, one of you, why don't you come up and just, yes, come on up, tell us about yourself and joining or rejoining the committee?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee of the board. I'm Fay Howard. I have actually been a member of the committee previously. From its inception, I've worked with the committee over the past two years or so, and have definitely been a part of its evolution and growth. I did drop off of the committee due to some scheduling constraints, but those have changed, and I'm looking to come back as a member of the committee and help it continue to advance its work within the community.
Excellent. Since we have you here, does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask Ms. Howard?
Yes, I, hello, how are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing pretty good. Nice seeing you again. And yes, Ms. Howard completed her term, and she didn't renew, and we miss her. She did great work while she was on the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee, and we would like to have her back. It's fortunate that this committee has two applicants that would like to be on this committee, but unfortunately, we only have one vacancy. So thank you so much for being here tonight, Ms. Howard, and our apologies. I know we were to, this was in queue to have you on the agenda at 8:30, and you stuck around like you always do. You always do. Hang in there.
Yeah.
Thank you. So nice seeing you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gito, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Carrera?
Fay, it's nice to see you again. You're always so, so nice to talk to and so upbeat, so...
Thank you.
I thank you for reapplying. I really do.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back if possible. So thank you.
I'd like to say that tonight was all a big test of your patience, but it really wasn't. It wasn't intended, but I would thank you very much. I will say that in the time that we've got an opportunity to work together, that I find your contributions extremely insightful, and also one of the hardest working women in the town of Stoughton. So I am also grateful that you've applied, that you would like to come back. I think the committee is really going to benefit from your many talents.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Jaclyn Daniels does not appear to be online or here in person, so we will move forward with a nomination.
I nominate Fay.
And I second that.
Excellent. Any other nominations? Okay, on the vote, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrera?
Yes.
Very happy to say yes to this as well, and welcome aboard, and thank you so much. I think since you last left, we did include a requirement that any board appointees fill out a, it was, it was a conflict of interest, like an ethics?
Okay.
Code of Conduct, thanks. I'm tired, so the name escaped me, but this Code of Conduct is available at the clerk's office, so you should be able to get a copy of that.
Okay.
Just read through it and then sign and demonstrate that you acknowledge.
Okay, I'll definitely do that. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Good for working with the committee.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, for all of the, I'm going to start, I will get to the board and the town manager, but we have members of the public who may want to speak, and so I wanted to offer them that opportunity. Are there members, I'll start with online, just because, as I said, I always forget. Is there anybody online who would like an opportunity to speak at public comments? Okay, seeing none in the hall, I see Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I know that we're headed into the budget season, and I just have two comments. I don't know what's on the capital plan, but I hope part of the capital plan includes an addition to the Council on Aging Building. There's space there where the present parking lot is, and we own the property across the street from the building where we can recreate the parking. And the reason I'm asking this is, there are more seniors in Stoughton than there are children. We are demographically one of the oldest communities in the area. The capacity of the building is 120. That means whenever there's a party or an event, there's a waitlist. We have thousands of seniors, and we have 120 seats. It just isn't fair. There's no equity there. My second comment is for more immediate action. In the next budget round, you may not know this, but there's no air conditioning in the Council on Aging kitchen. And at the senior luncheons every month, June, July, August, the volunteers would come out of that kitchen. Their faces would be bright red, and they would be mopping off perspiration. There's a window in the kitchen, so we could put in a window unit. If that's not feasible, because that would mean that there'd be less light coming in from outside, we could have the wall-mounted ones that like we have at Cedar Hill. But I can't imagine that it would cost anywhere near $1,000 to air condition. The rest of the building is air-conditioned, but we really need to air condition that kitchen, and I don't think this is a big ask. That's like 30 cents a senior. I think that's a fair request. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comment. I will ask the town manager, do you mind following up to see if we can, excellent, just want to see that added in. It's, this is one of those areas where I wish somebody had brought it up sooner, because I agree with you. There's no reason why there shouldn't be air conditioning in that kitchen, and we could definitely make that, see where we can make that happen, when we can make it happen. Any additional comments that want to be made? Okay, so seeing none, I am going to offer the board an opportunity to speak. Mr. Gito, do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight? Looks, actually, I'm not able to hear you. I'm not sure if you're on mute or if you have none. I will come back around. I'm going to ask Ms. Roberts.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to remind my fellow board members about the Massachusetts Select Board Association's spring webinar tomorrow at 12:00 PM. The topic is building stronger communities through civic participation. So once again, that's tomorrow at 12:00 PM. After the session, which will be led by leaders of the Collins Center, there will be an evaluation, and I asked my board members to respond to that evaluation, and also put a note that, to encourage them to start classes and take a deeper dive in Robert's Rule of Order and open meeting laws. I've been approached on several occasions by residents, friends, neighbors, that one of the reasons they don't get really involved in government is because they don't really know about Robert's Rule of Order and open meeting laws. And that's important, that they understand that fully. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Carrera, any comments for tonight?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I appreciate everyone's patience. I will ask Mr. Gito, just if you are on, do you have any comments for tonight? Okay, I'm not able to hear him, so Mr. Coulter, do you have any comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Was that?
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I will make just a brief comment. I know that we're about to open, the next item here is to open the warrant. I do want to just mention that I know Mr. Tisdale has taken on the role of making sure that a lot of the things related to the special town meeting and our annual town meetings are in order, that we have these articles. He works with town council to make sure that the motions are drafted timely. He has done an excellent job coordinating with the finance committee to make sure that the information that they need is made available to them timely, and all that's documented, that they receive it. And I just wanted to, just, you know, just because he is very much behind the scenes in this, just let everybody know that much of what we are able to accomplish with related to town meeting, the special town meeting, wouldn't be possible without his extremely hard work. And it would be a much more fractured and antagonistic process as well. And so he has really sort of greased the skins on this and made it what I think is, every year is a little bit more successful than the last. I think we've made a lot of progress. So I just wanted to call him out for his really excellent work on it.
Hello?
Yes.
Check Collins. Trying to use my computer, but can I respond to the Council on Aging about the air conditioning?
Yeah, sure. By, I mean, sir.
There is air conditioning in the kitchen, but the problem is that it takes up all the gas from the stove, and it's a wall-mounted unit, and so that has to be replaced. There is air conditioning in there, but when they use the stove, it sucks all the air from the stove and doesn't really cool down that kitchen area. Okay?
Thank you for that insight. I appreciate it. Thank you for that insight. I appreciate it.
But, uh, there is air conditioning in the kitchen. Okay? Just wanted to make that.
Thank you so much. So we are, so we'll, we'll still look into what needs to be done to make that a hospitable, um, working environment. Uh, but the, uh, the next item that we're taking up, the final, sorry, second, second to last item of the evening is the 2024 Special Town Meeting articles. Uh, so right now, we're, our only job is to open the warrant. Pardon me.
Is that on the agenda?
Yes, it's on the agenda, yeah. It's, it's, um, so it was, it was updated, I think, on Friday morning, because that had been left off by accident. Uh, but yeah, so our job here is to do nothing other than to simply open the warrant. We, we don't have a list of the articles yet. I think that is still, uh, something that, that our, uh, assistant town managers, um, compiling. There's, I think they're mostly have come in, but, uh, he'll put the, the final, um, uh, package together for us for our next, our next select board meeting, which will be, if this is open tonight, then it will, we will be meeting again next Tuesday to, um, to insert the articles into a warrant and to close, close the, uh, the warrant. So I will entertain a motion to open the, uh, uh, special, uh, meeting warrant. So I'll just go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, we're just a little tired, so I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
So motion to open the warrant is, I made that motion. Uh, Steve Cave made that motion and seconded by Deborah Roberts. Uh, Mr. Gito? I think he might be done for the night. Uh, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
I'll say yes, but I would have liked to have seen the list. I know there is a list.
Sure.
Because somebody said that they got the list. I don't have a list. I don't know if you have a list, but I don't have a list, and I know other people have it. That's why I didn't know it was coming up tonight.
No problem.
But I'm gonna vote yes.
Yeah, so it's just to open, but I will make sure personally that you receive a, this, the entire list, that the current, most current list, uh, tomorrow of articles. Um, so yes, I vote yes as well. So, uh, with, uh, Mr. Gito, um, see, I think he's, I can't tell, his, his phone number's still there, but he's not answering, but we'll assume that, that it's just the three of us now. So that is, uh, uh, three, uh, yeses, so unanimous vote. And then the last item, consent agenda, approve, uh, approval of open session minutes, uh, meeting of September 4th, 2024. Is there a motion to, for the, to, uh, approve the consent agenda?
So made.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by, uh, Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Ms. Roberts. Uh, all in favor? Uh, since we, it's just the three of us now?
Aye.
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 No, I'm, I'm still here. I just stepped away for a moment.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll do, so this is a motion to-
And I, and I, yes.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Gito, uh, made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I, I vote yes as well. And that is the end of our agenda, so unless people want to stick around, uh, we can-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Ms. Roberts. Uh, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Good night.
It's, uh, 10:03. Everybody have a great night. Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.